Thank you. All right, I'd like to go ahead and bring the public hearing section of the Warranted Board of Alderman meeting for Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017 into order. Jack, if you could come on forward, please. While he's coming forward, this is Section 425, signed regulations with ADM-84. I'll let you repeat that.
Thank you, sir.
Including what's in the public record for records.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This is a proposed text amendment to Section 425, signed regulations, ADM-84. Motion for approval passed nine to zero with one absent at the December 1st, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'd like to make, ask to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference, the public hearing notice, and the planning and zoning report.
If you do so. All right. Anybody from the public that would like to come forward, please come to the podium, announce who you are, speak on behalf of just Public Hearing Section 425, signed regulations, and we'll give you a five-minute maximum. Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and bring the Public Hearing Section 425, signed regulations, ADM-84, to a close, and we will open the Warranted Board of Alderman meeting for Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017. If you all would please rise and join us with a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're at the section where we hear from the public. We just asked you to come forward. Anything you would like to say, just make an announcement of who you are, and we'll give you five minutes to speak. All right, not seeing anyone, we'll move on. Next item would be the Board of Alderman comments. Anyone?
I don't have anything today.
Nothing here. Okay. Next would be the Mayor's comments. I've received a little piece of mail I think I'd like to read, and have been requested to read. Nice little card that says, Dear Mayor Schluter, Terry Thorne, and the Board of Alderman, thank you so much for your generous offer of land for the Tribute to Veterans Memorial and your involvement as part of our community team. This is a great Christmas gift for all of us. We are looking forward to 2017. We will together make this memorial reality. Signed, the Tribute to Veterans Memorial Team. And there are several signatures, and some I can read, some I can't, so I won't go through everyone. But thank you very much. I think that's a nice thing. I'll pass it around for everybody to look at, but it's a little nice tribute card. So I hope everybody had a good Christmas and I hope everybody had a good New Year. If you didn't, hopefully it'll get better. There is an open house meeting against MoDOT for tomorrow?
Yes. Tomorrow evening at the High School Commons is the public meeting related to the interchange project with MoDOT. So everyone is certainly invited to come between four and seven PM. And there will be drawings of what the project will look like. There will be MoDOT representatives there along with our engineer to answer any questions.
And I believe it's going to be pretty much of an open meeting. There's not going to be too much presentation, more of a question-answer type scenario.
Correct. There will not be a presentation, but there will be representatives there along with, you know, all of the drawings and pictures and ability to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Excellent. Looking forward for anybody who wants to attend. Thank you. All right. Next item would be the explanation of Bill Number 01-17, the TIF plan ordinance. Shannon, if you'd like to come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight you have an ordinance designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area under the TIF Act. Approval of the redevelopment plan and the initiation of tax increment financing within a single redevelopment project area within that area. As you all know, on December 14th, the TIF Commission held a public hearing on the redevelopment plan, took public comment, commented from taxing districts, and following the closure of that public hearing, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the redevelopment plan. So the ordinance tonight sets forth that approval. It also does create the special allocation fund within the city's accounts with separate accounts for RPA-1, which is the development of the former outlet mall that will be undertaken by RAK Development. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them regarding this ordinance. Pat Nasty is also here if there's any specific questions about the redevelopment plan itself.
Any questions? I don't think we have any questions, and if you guys don't have to stay in the room, I hope you guys will probably, by all means.
Okay.
I do have a comment. I think we need to acknowledge the plant members, the community who took part in the process, particularly Chairman Costello for his time, and everybody else who participated in the process representing the community, because I think community participation is what we've tried to pride ourselves in throughout this whole process of the TIF and of the interchange. So I think everybody needs to be recognized for their time.
I would agree, Almanock. For sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next item would be to address the high water bill by, it was Cherry Rowland.
I feel so official. I've never done this before. I feel special. I'm Cherry Rowland. This is my fiance, Anthony. Our son Lennon, he's five months old today. We live here in Warrington. I haven't even been here a year yet. We moved into Andorra Estates right off Highway 47. We received a water bill. We placed our deposit down on our water bill for September 6th. That was the deposit of a hundred dollars. In October, we got a bill for forty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Turning around in November, we got a bill for one thousand sixty-one dollars. On here, I had it printed out, and it said that we had used one hundred and twenty-six thousand fifty gallons. Then they sent out one for December that is also on here saying that we've used twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty gallons. My only, you know, concern with that is, you know, when we broke it down, it would, you know, equal to about forty gallons a minute that we were using. We did have a toilet that was running that was fixed. Our landlord came and replaced the entire thing. But it wouldn't use one hundred and twenty-six thousand gallons. And the only reason why I say this is because our water's been shut off since the 28th. December 28th is when they shut our water off. And we have been going next door to our neighbor's house. We've been going to Walmart, buying water, using water as we need for showers. We go out to my mom's house, and she lives in O'Fallon. The Saturday, we stayed in a hotel. We came home Sunday. When we left Saturday, I wrote down what the meter said, just because I believe the meter is broken, and I've called the Water Public Works and told them about the meter being broken, and someone got back to me and said that it would be fixed. No one has been out there, I'm assuming due to the holiday. When we left Saturday, our water meter read twenty thousand four hundred and eighty gallons. When we came home Sunday, I read it about 10 o'clock, and the meter read twenty thousand six hundred and forty-eight. So if our water is shut off, why is our meter running? I mean, reading that we have water. We also know that the toilet running would not run up that much because our toilet is only a 2.6 gallon toilet with a three-eighths fitting. We've talked to multiple contractors, we've talked to multiple people, and there's no way that we could, you know, for it running for a month, that it would run up one hundred and twenty-six thousand fifty gallons. That's kind of where we're at with it. We have a letter from our neighbor stating that we've used her water, and she has been generous enough to let us come over there, take showers as we need. We've been bringing pictures and gallons of water from her house to our house multiple times a day. My son is not breastfed, he's bottle-fed, so water is crucial for him. But like I said, we have a letter from her stating that she did that as well, as well as us tracking what our meter was reading, and it was still reading water when our water was shut off. I have pictures on my phone that our fire hydrant, we have a fire hydrant in the middle of our little cul-de-sac, and our fire hydrant is leaking. I've talked to the landlord about it. He said he was going to get somebody out there, but I don't know if that affects my water meter at all, but we took pictures of it just in case some way, somehow, that does affect us in a way. So...
Any questions?
Well, we have systems in place to send you a message. Did you receive these messages?
The message, I work for Coca-Cola, and whenever you guys called me, Cindy had actually looked on the call list, and it went through on your guys' end. In the Truesdale Plant, we don't get reception, so like I told her, it may have went in on your guys' side but didn't come in on my side. When we came up here and we received the bill, we came up here, we had got another bill the 26th of December, and we were up here the 28th, the day it got shut off. We talked to them, I talked to, I don't remember her name. It wasn't Cindy, it was someone else, but we talked to her, and she said that the only way that we could turn it back on was if we paid one thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-three cents to turn it back on.
She was a really kind lady.
She, yeah, she was sweet. She just, I mean, she was talking to us, and she said that we needed to pay that. And, you know, me and, we have good jobs. He works at SA of Holland, I work for Coca-Cola, but, I mean, we don't have a great enough job to just drop twelve hundred dollars and then two hundred dollars in the next month on a water bill for us to have water.
Can I make a comment?
You have to cover the mic so they can hear you.
Just to what you had said, we were informed that you guys gave a call at 50% of usage of the last month. This is about 600%, that usage. I mean, I feel like, I mean, that's a courtesy call. Where's the courtesy of making sure we're not drowning in this apartment? I mean, you know, I know I'm being silly here, but again, this is 600% more than what we used the very first month. So regardless of, I feel whether we got this courtesy call or not.
Well, as my information shows, that you got the courtesy call went out on the 9th.
Yes, sir. It says it right here also.
So from the, as I show, the bill ended on the 31st Halloween, and nine days later was the courtesy call.
We seen one also. The record we have pulled up whenever we were here, that the 28th did say on there, successful with the courtesy call.
Yeah, she showed us the paper stating that it had went through on your guys' end.
Any questions, Almanock?
Well, I mean, it's easy to not make comments. It's harder to make comments. I mean, we, I think this is the second water bill in the last year that there's been circumstances, although be it different, where people have run into a situation, and we've, I think in the last case, we didn't feel like we could, we didn't have any ability under the ordinances to waive the bill. That's my recollection, unless somebody else has a different recollection of that. These are always hard. I mean, they're hard things because with the rise, you're a young couple, you're trying to do your best, and, you know, if we waived everybody's throughout the whole city every time this occurred, you know, we'd be in a situation where, you know, you'd have to ask yourself, is it worth it to provide water services? And if we went to a third-party vendor, I doubt the third-party vendor would waive any of these bills either. So, you know, I, I don't know.
I can understand that.
Yeah.
Cindy said the same thing to us, and like we told her, we understand that this happens a lot. I mean, people come to you and say that they have a high water bill and haven't used that much water, and they have. We understand that. Where we're coming from is, this is our first home together, we just had a baby. I mean, it threw us for a loop getting a bill for one hundred and twenty-six thousand fifty gallons with me, him, and a four-month-year-old child.
Right.
Just the comparison, because, I mean, he was here in September also.
He was, yeah, and we only used two thousand gallons, and it was forty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. And then the next month, in November, it was one hundred and twenty-six thousand fifty. And the only reason why I believe that it's broke is because while our water was off, our meter was still reading water.
Is that typical?
We went and read the meter. When we shut the water off, the meter read 20645. That was at 2:49 PM on the 28th. We went out today and read it, and it read 20645, and that was at 10:50 AM today. So it hasn't moved.
Now, is there a meter on the outside and on the inside?
Well, I don't know how that apartment complex works.
There should be a meter just on the inside.
On the inside? That's the one that we were reading on Saturday, the one that's inside our laundry room.
It's a, it's a radio read, so we're going to pick up.
I see.
Oh, we were reading the dial, the actual...
You were actually reading the dial. They are hard to see, absolutely.
Sure, yeah.
That's why we go to the radio read, so we don't have errors like that.
Sure.
Because they are hard to read.
And upside down, yeah, a little bit.
Yeah, you know, the other thing, the notes here, you know, I'm trying to find where I was reading this. Talked about the toilet running on even when you went to work, you know, and have you talked to the landlord about, does he have some responsibility to you to take care of the bill? Because if it's his responsible, was for the toilet and the responsibility for the apartment, and he fails to do that, my question as a renter would be to him is, why are we paying this bill because you fail, you were neglectful in providing?
We confronted him about it, and he looked us in the face and told us he could do absolutely nothing. He came up here, and I guess he spoke to Gabrielle, no, Cindy, maybe it was Cindy. It was one of those two stating, and I guess he tried to put it in his name and let us pay it back like that, monthly payments, but we would be paying him versus be paying the water company itself. I guess she had told him that he wasn't allowed to do it due to the fact that it was an enormous amount of money.
Well, I would have thought we would have taken the check from anybody. I mean, is that not true? What you negotiate on the side with your landlord is not our business, but if the landlord were to come in, or anybody were to, if I was a nice guy and had an extra twelve hundred dollars to come in and say, I want to pay their water bill, I wouldn't think the city would turn my payment down.
Well, what it was, was he tried to put it in his name.
Directly.
Directly in his name.
Oh, he wanted to put the account in his name.
Yes.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we proceed with that if he wanted to, if he wanted to put the water bill in his name? Since he owns the property, why would we have not accepted that?
Then we wouldn't be able to collect the past due balance on their account, because if they don't pay it, we can't turn the water off for non-payment. It doesn't, it wouldn't be going to collections if we did that. There would be no guarantee that it would get paid.
He is actually just, he was a maintenance person, he is now the landlord. He actually doesn't own it. His name's Levi Roberts. A man, Dan Perrell, is the son of A.J. Kocansky, and A.J. Kocansky is who we write our rent check out to. It's his son. Come to find out, there was actually, there's actually supposed to be an email on the office door where we live that states when something is wrong, because he doesn't live here, he lives in O'Fallon, and we are supposed to email him when something goes wrong like this, so he knows. And that's not on the door. When we talked to Levi, we had told Levi about our toilet multiple times. Our toilet was running when we got the bill for forty-eight thirteen. Now that we both work full-time jobs, if we didn't catch it, going back to what you said, if we didn't catch it running and we left for work, we were gone for eight hours out of the day if we didn't hear it running or we didn't, you know, notice it. It was running without us knowing while we are at work, working. And so when he came, he finally just came and fixed it Friday, Friday, and put a whole brand-new toilet in, but now we're having to fill up the back of the toilet with pitchers of water just to use the restroom.
I know with the last one we did, we offered a six-month payment agreement, but that's on top of your monthly bills on top of that. Is that something you had looked at or have been told about?
We were told about it, and we were told to write a letter, which I believe Anthony did, as far as I know. It's just a matter of, you know, should we be, our thought about it is, you know, should we be paying back money that we couldn't physically use? I mean, that's kind of where our standpoint is, you know? That would be anybody's standpoint. How are we going to...
Either way, we wanted to come in here and have a, and have a talk.
No, by all means, that's your right to do.
But I mean, the reality is, you didn't, you say you didn't use the water, but we still had to process the water in the plant. So in other words, we had to still treat the water, even though sometimes we've had situations where we've had water leaks where it doesn't go to the sewer plant, you can prove that it went to the ground. So we, I don't know, we still do that, but we used to give some consideration on the bill for the fact that, yeah, you're going to pay for the water bill, and you're, and the sewer portion of the bill, you don't have to pay because we know the water went directly to the ground, so we weren't processing it. So if this was running in a toilet, it was being processed through the plant, even though it really technically wasn't used.
Sure, absolutely. But when, you know, we just, we, another thing we want to know is if that fire hydrant is affecting our water at all.
It shouldn't affect it at all.
Because you have a meter directly on you, so it doesn't affect it.
No, it doesn't affect it.
I can answer a little better than what we can.
So we were just, that's kind of where we're at.
With the, with the six-month agreement, along with the bill, like you said, we were told to write a letter. I'm guessing the person it was supposed to be addressed to was on vacation or some kind of, I'm not exactly sure on all the details, but I didn't, the letter that I wrote, it wasn't, it was an email to probably somebody totally different. What was the person's name I was supposed to write the letter to?
I'm sorry. I received a letter from you, an email letter, and I believe I talked to you and said I can't really discuss the bill because his name isn't on the, isn't on the account, but you said you talked to him, and I think you were there when we did that.
Yeah. Well, I was at work. When I got home, I talked to him. But, you know, it's kind of, I mean, we've been put in a rough spot, and that's kind of where we're at, you know? And if it's due to our toilet running, one hundred and twenty-six thousand gallons of water, and it's, you know, our landlord's fault, you know, he has physically told us that he cannot do anything about it. He tried to put it in his name, and I knew that from the get-go that he couldn't do it just because I knew that, you know, if they've done that before, people have left and not paid it back. So I understand that.
I could just put it in mind. I mean, you know what I'm saying? We already knew that wasn't even right.
Right.
I think the landlord knows that the toilet was broke.
Yeah.
And doing the math, you know, on a broken toilet running for 29 days, I've had this problem myself, by the way, so I know it uses a lot of water when your toilet's broke. You know, it, the one hundred and twenty-six thousand is not actually out of whack because of a broken toilet. I mean, that, that is a legitimate number.
I apologize.
But, you know, I would think the landlord realizing that this is actually part of the property's problem, that there could be some arrangement you could have with them to reimburse, not, maybe on the rents not as high, and reimburse for the water, but...
Well, and the only, the only issue we have with that is we are not in contact with the owner of, we are not allowed to be in contact with him.
It's, uh...
It's more of like...
I have the opportunity to talk to Dan and get in contact with him, because, because I can...
It's more like Levi doesn't want us to tell him what he doesn't do because it's his job. And so the email, like I said, the email that's supposed to be on the door got taken off. We are supposed to have A.J. and Dan's number both, and we don't, we had to, I had to get Dan's number from a resident that has lived in Andorra for 10 years, and she's had it from, you know, long, long time ago. And so he will physically, anytime we ask for the phone number, he'll be like, oh, well, he'll answer the phone call, but he'll just tell you to call me. Or he'll be like, he can't do anything for you, all he's going to do is get mad at you and hang up the phone. And so that's kind of where our conversations go with talking to the owner, because I physically would have talked to him a long time ago because we've had multiple problems with Levi besides a running toilet, so...
Counselor, would this be something that could be taken up in small claims courts?
No doubt about it. Typically, your lease states that your landlord, it's based on your lease, landlord's required to provide a livable, properly working, functioning, you know, amenities that are part of it. So, yeah, a small claims reimbursement would probably be a smart move for you guys.
Now, the question is...
If you don't want to talk to me any other way, that's what I...
Yeah, I mean, I'm surprised he didn't offer to abate some of the rent, you know, for next, you know, over...
We've told him multiple times that we were, due to, I mean, if you guys really knew everything that happened in our home, you know, you would be amazed at the things that he hasn't done. And the reason why we haven't done that is just because we don't feel the need to talk to Levi anymore, just because anytime we say something, he says he's going to be here one day, and he shows up three weeks later, you know? And so we've been, I mean, since we've moved in, we've been there for about eight months now, and since we've moved in, I mean, we've tried to get ahold of A.J. ever since we moved in, and no, I mean, nothing. He will not give us a phone number, he will not give us anything. I mean, the email was taken off the door, and that's how we're supposed to let the owner know when something is wrong, so he can keep tabs on Levi.
Well, I'm going to interject just for a minute, because I know we're getting a lot of things involved in it. I do know to kind of soundboard off something Gary, or Almanock said at first. I believe one of the things we did add was the six-month payment thing to try and help with high bills.
We do have the ability to take the past due balance and divide it over a six-month period.
Because of our limitation of being able to forgive bills fully. I think that is something...
Yeah, I mean, to me, I think the route you should go is sign a six-month agreement and then pursue the issue in small claims court with your landlord, because clearly if this is related to the toilet and they're responsible, then that's their obligation. Then they need to be reimbursing you somehow, either through a rent abatement or giving you a check back, and I think you have to push the issue.
Now, the question is, if we sign this agreement, what do we have to do to get our water turned on as soon as possible?
That would be something I think we need to refer.
Yeah, I don't know. How, how does that work?
They just have to come up with a certain amount?
Yes. We'll divide the past due balance by six months, and you'll have to pay whatever that agreed-upon amount is in addition to whatever your current monthly bill would be.
Sure, I understand.
So you'll just need to come in and get that agreement in place and get that all set up, and then you should be able to move forward.
Which, I may be doing my math wrong, but you're right around one hundred and ninety-eight dollars, six-four cents.
Plus the current. Yeah, plus the current.
Plus the current.
Yeah, they'll have to make the payment of a current amount of some sort.
And I've been cutting you off, so go ahead, Alderman.
That's okay. I was just trying to, you were getting off track.
That's okay, I was just trying, we were getting off track.
Um, now, in order to get our water turned on, will we have to pay something that day?
Yes, you will have to make a payment.
Now, does it ha, will it have to be that two hundred dollars, the one ninety-eight?
We can work out those details, that's not something that we need to try to work out here, but you'll need to come in and talk to us, and we'll work out, but you will need to make a payment on your account.
Okay.
So I would be prepared when you come to tell us what payment you can make currently on your account on that day.
Now, whenever he replaced the toilet, including, as you were saying, Friday, he replaces both toilets only because of the fact of what's been going on here recently. Whenever I first told him thirty days ago, twenty-nine days ago, about the toilet running, he came in and switched the guts out of the top, it was upstairs toilet, and switched the guts out of there. Now, I did, I do remember continuing to hear it run. I, I would take it off and, you know, close it and close it. He's, he's not all there. All I had to do was take the chain and continue to loop it around and made it shorter, so it would actually work properly, and ever since then, we haven't had that problem, and then we got this. So I mean, one reason why I'm making that comment is because you said twenty-nine days running, it wasn't exactly twenty-nine, but at the same time, I mean, it doesn't make a difference, it's still...
I mean, if you're, if you're in your home and it's quiet and you hear the toilet running, you gotta address it immediately. I mean, there's just no question about it.
Well, and if we, like I said, if we heard it, we, I mean, as soon as we caught it, we stopped it.
Well, the reason why some of it's high is because you get charged for water intake and sewage outtake, so if it's continually running and it's in a toilet, if you put, as you can see now, you put so much water, it's gonna flush, regardless if you get running water or not, it's, it's a weight thing on a, on the plumbing system. So obviously, if water's running in, it's gonna flush itself as well.
I didn't know that.
So, I don't know, we need to make a motion or anything?
No.
I recommend...
I have one quick, one quick question. If it's, if it's still, you know, an unusual burden, and I don't, you know, I don't know, do we ever have the option of going longer than the six months?
We have not done that, because even at six months, you run the risk. If the customer leaves, there is no way to...
No recourse, no recourse.
You can't collect.
Let's see, when the, like, the lease comes up or...
Yeah, so if you, if you signed a six-months agreement, and your lease came up in two months, and you decide, I'm done with the landlord, and you left, you, you moved out, you know, then we would be stuck with the bill, that's why there's the time frame, so to worry.
Are you be able to come in tomorrow morning and try and get that situated?
He would have to come in, and I don't think he's allowed to do that due to the fact that my name's on it.
Is he not allowed to negotiate anything if her name's on it?
If he's not on the account, he cannot do business on the account.
How hard is it to get us...
He can make the decision to add him to it.
Okay, maybe an option you may wanna pass along.
And I just, if, yeah, if I can make a quick comment on kind of the strictness of the rules about the names on the account and transferring it to the landlord, part of the reason we do strictly enforce that is, time after time after time, we have landlords that try to come in when they're trying to evict somebody and get the utilities shifted to their name so they can then shut it off and cause that. So we try to encourage it to stay in the tenant's name, because that way, we don't become a tool for them to shut off utilities as they're going through the eviction process. I just think that little background information, it wa, it, you know, it's been a problem in the past with landlords trying to get stuff shifted into their names, so they can then cut water and utilities off and...
Force somebody out.
And force somebody out, which we don't want to get involved in.
Sure.
So I know it's not really probably the answers you guys were looking for, but hopefully we kind of...
Well, and that was, that's what really bothered us, was the, was the, I mean, that's an insane amount of water. You know, I, we, we looked at a whole bunch of, I mean, I look big-sized pools, like eighty-thousand gallons, I mean, that's more than that, I mean, it is just obnoxiously ridiculous, it's unfathomable, really. And, you know, that was my, my main thing while I was upset, was like, okay, you give a call at fifty percent, that's six hundred, six hundred percent of our last month's usage. That's insane. There's not another call, there really should be, and that's insane.
I would seriously consider a small claims court to go after the landlord, and I think you've got a good shot.
Good case on that one.
Before you guys go, I got a question for Guy. Is there a way to reset that amount, since on the second month, there's no high-usage call on the automated thing? Can we reset it back to what the usage is, so that with the automated system, if they have another issue? Because it's not gonna pick it up until it reaches one-twenty-six thousand now, is it?
That's a good, that was...
Or is the automated system isn't...
We can, he's worried about it, because next to reading won't red-flag it, because, well, it should be fifty percent higher or fifty percent lower, so it should red-flag it fifty percent lower, too. But we'll make sure we keep...
Yeah, I'll look into that to see.
And also, too, when we go to turn the water on, we'll, somebody will have to be there, and we won't just turn it on and walk away. We'll make sure we'll go through...
I was actually gonna ask if we could, like, walk around and...
Absolutely, yeah, we'll bring some red dyes, we can put in the back of the bowl, make sure we don't have no running water that way. So we won't, we won't walk, turn it on, and wave to you. We'll make sure we go through everything, make sure we don't have that going on.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. All right. Next item on the agenda will be hearing from Director of Operations and Finance Officer, Terry Thon.
My first item for you this evening is a request for approval of an ordinance later on this evening, for the cost apportionment agreement with MoDOT. This is the agreement that spells out the parameters of the new interchange being taken over by MoDOT upon its completion, and in return for that, the city taking over the Veterans Memorial portion of their, their current roadway from forty-seven over to the roundabout that's just south of the, where the new interchange will be. Also, it includes MM from where the city currently has maintenance responsibility on out to, again, that southern roundabout where all of the new development will occur. Those two areas will become the responsibility to the city for maintenance. In return, MoDOT will take over the maintenance of the overpass portion of the new interchange up to the north service road connection. This spells out basically that the city is responsible for the cost, we're responsible for the engineering, and all of those right-of-way acquisitions, which will be done by donation. The commission, MoDOT, will be responsible for letting the work, so it will be a MoDOT construction project. They will do the advertising for bids, they will receive those bids and make the award of the construction contract. The commission will administer and do the inspections of the actual construction work, surveys, and locating of areas out there will be the responsibility of the city. The city will deposit with MoDOT prior to the advertising for bid, currently an amount equal to twelve million, three-hundred-and-two thousand dollars. That's the estimated construction cost, specifically for the construction project portion at this time. We did ask them to include language that states if the estimate for the construction comes down, which it looks like that may happen, then we would provide an updated estimate, so that amount might be slightly less than what is stated here. But at any rate, it has to be deposited with MoDOT prior to them advertising the project for construction bids. Current estimate for total project is still fifteen point four million dollars. Had an update from our engineer today, that is still estimated to be the overall project cost. There was some additional expense added resulting from how deep the actual rock is out there and how bad the soil condition is with the settling that's potential, so we thought we were gonna come out less than what our fifteen point four was at one point, but now that we've added those things back in, we're gonna be right at that fifteen point four million. But they continue to make changes on a daily basis and update things related to what those costs could be. So there will be the installation of a closed-circuit camera that MoDOT is requiring us to install, so when you see those pictures of the traffic, we will have one at the new interchange that will be available for viewing. Those are really the basics of what's included. There will be a separate agreement related to sidewalks that are part of this project, because the intent is to have a sidewalk on the overpass portion, and depending upon funding, those will be extended out into the development areas as those projects happen by the developers. So some of those will end up being on MoDOT right-of-way, so we will have a separate sidewalk agreement with them when those occur and as those move forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
What is the role of the railroad agreement? I mean, what, I mean, what are we trying to get an agreement on relative to the railroad?
Because the new construction on MM goes right up to the bridge abutment, the goal, because we're gonna have to pursue an agreement with the railroad to put some cleanup of the roadway, if you will, where that connects.
Okay.
Our goal is to, while we have that agreement in place, that permit, to go ahead and make some improvements to the actual surface of the road underneath that bridge abutment, it needs to be spruced up a little bit. So while we have the railroad permit to do that as well, so we don't have to then, a couple of years from now, go back and try to get a new permit. But the purpose is, because the new roadway will be right up to the bridge, we're within there right-of-way, we have to get the permit.
Okay, so we're really not relying on them getting, doing anything other than giving us the permission?
A permit.
Because sometimes that can slow the project down significantly if we're waiting on them to do something other than an agreement.
Yeah, in this case, it, bottom line means pay the fee to the railroad.
Okay, we can do that.
That's really what it amounts to.
So, the other question I have is, obviously, if we're gonna write a check for twelve million plus, I take it Gabrielle doesn't have another checking account right now, so we're gonna go through a bond process? Is that how that's gonna work, or did you talk to us about...
No, this is, the entire fifteen point four million is funded by the MTFC loan that we obtained. So what we're doing is drawing down the funds just as we need it to reduce the amount of interest. So when we get close to that point and have an updated estimate, then we'll make that draw, which will probably be the final draw, we'll draw the balance out, and then write the check to MoDOT.
Okay, I'm with you now. Any other questions? It's exciting stuff.
Very exciting.
I agree.
One more step.
Moving forward.
Absolutely. And the other thing I have for you is just the reminder on some upcoming meetings. We have scheduled the meeting with the Economic Development Council on the twelfth, January twelfth, at five-thirty, that'll be here at City Hall in the chambers. On January twentieth is the planning meeting at Enns Brook. Breakfast will be available starting at eight, with the meeting starting at eight-thirty. If any of you have additional topics that you want to get added to that planning meeting agenda, please get those to me. I've had a few things that have been submitted.
I do have one thing I think we need to talk about for the meeting, having walked numerous times from my auto repair place along the service road, I wonder if we need to think about some sidewalk considerations that allow people to walk down to the new shops at Warren, and it's, it's gonna be called, because you can walk down to Denny's from forty-seven, but from there on, you're really walking on a shoulder, so I think we need to put that into the discussion to see how we can make it easier for somebody to walk down to the new shops, which I think is gonna be important to do, because it's not terribly safe to be walking along that shoulder without sidewalks.
Well, the good news is, when we take those over, we will have more control of our ability to put sidewalks there, so that will make it simpler.
Right, so I think that needs to be something we need to talk about, you know, because we can work on how you, could we fit it into the budget, or where, or whatever the case may be, and we do have some time period to get that done, since we're not looking for an opening till the eighteenth of...
Okay, I will add that. And then Greg, do you wanna talk about the repeater?
Sure. Exciting news.
This isn't somebody that's like, multiple accidents or anything?
No, I thought we were gonna say, haven't we discussed this before? I wouldn't have said it if you wouldn't have said it.
So, I seem to recall coming to you guys with this project many, many months ago, it seems like forever ago, and...
What's taking you so long?
It, well, it wasn't me. Apparently, the FCC takes their time getting a frequency coordinator, which is what they needed to do, but last Thursday, they finally got it turned on for us, and the guys seemed to be enjoying being able to hear each other finally, from one end of town to the other. And actually, we had a kind of interesting test today, one of our guys had to go to Wentzville to take a patient into one of the hospitals in there, and he was able to talk back, and everybody that was standing around went, whoa, I can hear him on my walkie, so. It's a completely new world for those guys.
Not that I need to know that, but I'm sure the newspaper reporter would like to know what a repeater does.
Oh, it's, uh...
Technical or non-technical, just keep it simple.
Yeah, I'll try to keep it simple.
Don't lawyer it up.
So, I will, I'll just nerd it up. I, there's no way I could ever lawyer it up.
He techs stuff up all the time.
Where's the book, repeaters, dubbing it a lot, whatever.
Yeah, I, all I can do is geek it up, but there's no way I could lawyer it up. That's, takes a special breed to do that. Basically, a repeater takes the, the signal that dispatch is hearing, retransmits it at higher power, so that everybody can hear it. Pretty easy. Was that, is that good?
So if a call comes in for one car, everybody will hear that call?
Well, previously, everybody heard the dispatch side of the call, but like, anybody that's in scanner world, that's listening to a scanner, normally, unless the police car or the officer was in their neighborhood, that's all they were hearing, was the officer that's in the neighborhood. Now, they hear everybody.
Oh, that's fine, now we can hear everybody.
Well, I know the scanners for Christmas.
Yeah, how about Valentine's Day?
There you go. So, really addresses an officer safety issue. Now, you know, the sergeants know what's going on all the time, the other officers know what's going on.
So they don't always have to have three cars show up at the same place.
Right.
No, I meant that sincerely, because now they...
No, I think, he's right, I mean, it's just a huge officer safety issue, like what you're saying, you know, so I think it's very, thank you very much.
That's all I have.
All right, that was easy. All right, next we hear from Zoning Officer and Building Commissioner, Jack Cannon.
Once again, proposed text amendment to Section 425, sign regulations, ADM eighty-four.
Well, having sat in the zoning meeting on this, I mean, the basic concept here is when you get in larger square-foot shopping operations, like a large Walmart or a large box store, they generally ask for larger signs to display their services. And so what this is doing, if I understand right, is simply doing an amendment to the ordinance that will allow the larger box stores that hopefully will be coming into the commercial area to have signs more appropriate than what they're, for what they're used to, and what they feel like they need to advertise their store and their product. Is that basically it?
That's exactly right. And we have, we have the, the specifications for the, like, on the highway overlay district pole signs, it has to be a store of at least thirty thousand square feet. For the retail center, multi-tenant signs, it has to be a, a development that has at least a hundred thousand square feet. So it, it is a little larger signage form, but it, it's a reward for the larger stores and developments.
And I think the one comment made in the meeting, I can't remember who the commissioner was, mentioned that he thought that when these actually start happening, they may come back and say, you know, you give us a bigger sign, but we're really used to much bigger signs, so we could be addressing this issue again as that development takes place, that's what I recall.
Yeah, well, I think we're being very proactive by trying to get ahead of the game... Yeah, well, I think we're being very proactive by trying to get ahead of the game and change our code now instead of being behind the eight ball.
I agree.
All right, anything else? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, now, next is hearing from Finance Manager Gary O'Kearney.
First item I have is the accounts payable for the month in the amount of $480,696.28.
Any questions or comments? Not seen any. I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $480,696.28. Motion made by Alderman Castleley, seconded by Alderman Schollarty. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Scholz, Alderman Scholz.
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Castleley.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Delloy.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one absent. Next item.
The next item I have is the monthly report for the month of November. You might have noticed that the sales tax has decreased. It is 5% below budget through November. When you look at December, it is 4%. And compared to last year at December, we're actually $38,000 lower than where we were last year. I think we probably need to look at January, February, sales tax revenues to see if, you know, where we are, since that will include all of the Christmas shopping, so that's not where it is.
Yeah, I sent an email out earlier on this because it was a little disconcerting to see that small of a check come in in November, because it certainly was smaller than anything else we received in the prior fifteen months or eighteen months. But hopefully, we'll see better numbers moving forward.
For the next months, and that is all I have.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Next will be hearing from Economic Development Director, Michelle Schlatter.
Good evening. The thing I have for you tonight is economic development report. I followed up with Bill Moore with the East Central broadcast in reference to the property the city owns on Pickney. Things are moving along with that. They're very busy right now with closing out their year-end. However, he hopes to be able to come in soon and make an offer for the property for their broadcast station. So that's some very good news. And been working with an individual, Jack and I have, who's interested in opening a business in Warrenton. This is new business, something totally new to our area that'll be on Main Street, and he is actually on for planning and zoning January 5th, 2017, so that'll be something very exciting coming to Main Street.
Does everybody have access to the PNC documents, the emails, everybody, or is that on everybody's iPad?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would encourage any aldermen to take a few minutes and just kind of look at the proposal that's coming out on this, this project for Thursday night, because it is exciting to sit there and actually look at something that's, that's going on, so it's certainly worth ten or fifteen minutes of your time to look up those documents and just see what's there.
I agree, I do agree. All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item will be the bills to ordinance. Entertained a motion for the, for the first reading of bill number 01-17. So moved.
Jack.
Motion made by Alderman Schollarty, seconded by Alderman Delloy.
An ordinance designating, designating a portion of the city of Warrenton, Missouri as a redevelopment area, approving the Warrenton West Development Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and Project, approving a redevelopment project for redevelopment project area one, and adapting, adopting tax increment financing with respect thereto, making findings related thereto, and authorizing certain actions by city officials.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 01-17. So moved. Second. Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Ock.
An ordinance designating a portion of the city of Warrenton, Missouri as a redevelopment area, approving the Warrenton West Development Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and Project, approving a redevelopment project for redevelopment project area one, and adopting tax increment financing with respect thereto, making findings related thereto, and authorizing certain actions by city officials.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schell Harvey.
Yes.
Alderman Castleley.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Delloy.
Yes.
Alderman Schultz.
Yes. Motion carries five zero with one absent. Our bill, I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 02-17. So moved. Second. Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Ock.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the city of Warrenton, Missouri, providing for the course, cost apportionment of improvement or reconstruction of Interstate 70 and Route MM.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 02-17. So moved. Second. Motion made by Alderman Schollarty, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the city of Warrenton, Missouri, providing for the cost apportionment of improvement or reconstruction of I-70 and Route MM.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Castleley.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Delloy.
Yes.
Alderman Schultz.
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey.
Yes. Motion carries, our bill carries five zero with one absent. And I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 03-17. So moved. Second. Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Ock.
An ordinance amending chapter 425 sign regulations of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 03-17. So moved. Second. Motion made by Alderman Delloy, seconded by Alderman Scholl.
An ordinance amending chapter 425 sign regulations of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Delloy.
Yes.
Alderman Schultz.
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey.
Yes.
Alderman Castleley.
Yes.
Motion carries, our bill carries five zero with one absent. All right, we're at that portion. I will entertain a motion for adjournment of the board of aldermen meeting. So moved. Second. Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Scholl. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That would be majority, and we are so adjourned. Thank you.